Good evening, everyone. We'd like to take time out at this time to call the order. The September meeting for the Cooper County Planning Commission. Going to, before we move any further, we're going to ask if we all could just bow our heads in a moment of silence for 911 on today. Thank you very much. At this time, we would now go to the approval of the agenda tonight's agenda. Any additions or deletions? Being chair and attain a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed likewise. All right, the agenda is accepted or approved. Next, the minutes from our August 14th meeting. We receive those. Any changes or concerns with the minutes? Being under chair and attain a motion to accept it?
So moved.
Second. Improper movement second, so no vote is needed. We'll put those to record, okay? Now, we move into our new business. And we turn it over to Mr. John Hill.
Mr. Chairman, we have case U-2247. Twenty-four dash one. It's a request by Generation Two LLC, Juanita Miller, for a special use permit to allow for the construction and operation of a contractor's office and warehouse with outdoor storage, including truck and equipment parking. Proposed use is located within the entrance corridor overlay district, and Article 30 dash three dash two point two requires this use to acquire a special use permit in accordance with the article. The property is zoned HI heavy industrial and is located on Route 1529, James Madison Highway, with proposed entrance on Joan Drive, which is a private drive. It's found in the Stevensburg Magisterial District on tax map 34, parcel eight F.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. It's Neil Redd. To the record, we're looking at a special use permit in light of Article 30, and just a little bit different than your normal special use permit, which, or conditional use permit, would be the term that that section uses, which is under Article 17. Those standards are a little bit different. Article 30 standards will apply tonight for this review. And there's a unique difference between this application and what you looked at with the same applicant on their property several months ago to the right, which is light industrial property. That did require a conditional use permit and a special use permit, both. Tonight, the heavy industrial zoning, which this current property does not require a conditional use permit for the use itself, only in light of Article 30. We tried to articulate that in the staff report. I know it's confusing, but I just wanted to hit that up front. And I'm going to share just the intent of Article 30 because it is a little different than Article 17. The entrance corridor overlay district is intended to implement the Conference of Plan Goal of protecting the county's natural, scenic, and historic architectural and cultural resources, including the preservation of natural and scenic resources of the same may serve this purpose, to ensure equality of development compatible with those resources through architectural control, to stabilize and improve property values, to protect and enhance the county's attractiveness to tourists and other visitors, to sustain and enhance the economic benefits accruing to the county from tourism, to stimulate complementary development appropriate to the prominence afforded properties deemed to be historic, architectural, or cultural significance. So it's a little bit different than your public health, safety, welfare guidelines that you see in Article 17. That being said, the property is on the screen. The applicant's properly filed the right application to move forward tonight. They're actually working on their site plan as well. At 6:30, you all convene this Architect's Review Board. You issue the certificate of appropriateness for their building and their layout. So we're going to look at the special use permit side, which is just the outdoor storage portion. Just another view of the property. It sits right next to the east, or to the right of Southern States. It's at the intersection of Route 1529. Well, it was there. See if it comes back. Still there. So this property right here, it would be accessed off of Joan Drive, which is currently a private drive off of Beverly Ford Road, near the intersection here. But the visibility is there from Route 1529, and the property is adjacent to it. You saw this screen with Architect's Review Session. This is the current layout for the applicant. The proposed outdoor storage area, which is the focus of the special use permit, is shown to the north of the building, and it's just isolated, this area that's encapsulated in red. The applicant is moving forward with site plans, and that's why both are shown on the screen. This was the previous site that was already approved. That is not under consideration tonight. But just in fairness to how the sites will work together, I think the applicant fairly shows both sites. But just keep in mind, you've already permitted this site here. We're looking at this, this particular site here. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to leave it there. We did, staff did recommend a few conditions, you know, and those are very similar to what you looked at with the certificate of appropriateness. And I think the applicant mentioned they were, they were okay with those conditions as well. The proposed outdoor storage should be limited to those areas that are shown on the concept plan, as I mentioned or pointed out in red here, just to the north of the proposed building. But the proposed use shall not commence until a site plan is submitted, and they're already working on that now. And that storage of interoperable junk vehicle shall be prohibited. And that's a common condition that we've seen, and the board and the planning commission recommended the board, you know, for any outdoor storage area that's permitted. Chairman, that's a pretty simple take on what we're looking at, just to keep in mind, we're looking at Article 30, not Article 17 here because of the zoning. So your comments, considerations should be in light of Article 30.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Is the applicant or representative for the applicant here? Okay. Give your full name for the record.
Darren Smith with Carter &amp; Consulting.
Anything you would like to add?
I don't think so. I think Sam gave a really good outline of what we're trying to do here, and as he mentioned, and we're fine with the conditions as they were written in the staff report, so.
Okay. All right, sir. Any questions? Anyone? Done?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. One of the hatched areas, I'm not clear as to what that is. It's the area west of the building and south of the parking lot along 29. Yeah, it's kind of L-shaped.
So that, I think that's a gravel area. That's not intended to have any storage in it. That's just for maneuverability. Is that the part you're talking about?
Yes. So that will be traveled on vehicles.
That, yeah, that, yeah.
It's essentially part of the parking lot.
It's essentially part of the parking lot, yeah. Anywhere that there's going to be permanent, like, like constant vehicular traffic, we've put asphalt. Everywhere where there's just going to be, you know, we just need a little bit more movement room to get around for those bays and stuff, we put gravel.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Keith?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Sam, correct me if this is not an Article 30 consideration, but we've got, we've got two parcels. The usages are basically the same, and the layout's going to be basically the same. So how will they get developed? Will it be like a phased approach, or will it all be done at the same time? Because that impacts how much construction traffic is spilling out into that side road.
Yeah, so, and I might have, the head can talk more to that. Right now, we do, we have submitted as two separate site plans. So they will be two separate permits. Through DEQ, it will be one permit, however, for the stormwater. So the intent is, I think the intent is going to be to do these at the same time or close there, too. But again, since they are different site plans, there is the ability, I think, to do these separately if they wanted to.
Well then, for staff, is that going to require any kind of traffic study because of the construction traffic going in and out?
No, it wouldn't rise to the level of requiring a TIA, what's being proposed now for traffic, no.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, open a public hearing. If there's someone who'd like to speak to this application, just raise your hand, be recognized by the chair, then we'll have you come forth. Anyone? Declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners, any other discussion? If not, the chair entertain a motion.
Now I can make my motion to approve. Okay. All right, so I recommend that we approve case U-2247 dash 24 dash one for a conditional special use permit for outdoor storage. And I do want to include the three articles that, or items that staff has proposed, that the storage will be limited to areas depicted on that outdoor storage on the concept plan as outdoor storage. And that the proposed use shall not commence operations until a site plan in accordance with Article 20 of the zoning ordinance has been approved. Number three, the storage of inoperable or junk vehicles shall be prohibited.
Okay. All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, have a motion and second. Do we have any other discussion? Being under chair, entertain a motion at this time?
Motion.
Oh, excuse me. All, we're going to vote right now. We don't need to do that again, do we? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Okay. Send us forward with a recommendation of approval. Okay? Thank you, sir. Okay, Neil, next case?
Mr. Chairman, the planning commission will consider a revision to Appendix A zoning ordinance, specifically Article 6C, Commercial Services District, specifically Article 6C dash two, use regulations for that district. The proposed revisions would limit residential uses in the CS district, specifically restricting residential uses to 25% of the total acreage of the lot, not including mixed-use structures. The limited residential uses would be permitted in primary and/or detached structures. The planning commission will determine whether the proposed ordinance amendment is necessary to further the general purposes of promoting the health, safety, or general welfare of the public and other purposes found in the Code of Virginia, Section 15, Point 2283 and 2285. The planning commission held a public hearing to discuss similar amendments on April 10th, 2024, continued the discussion on May 8th, 2024. On June 4th, the Board of Supervisors requested further consideration from the commission. The commission held an additional work session on July 10th, 2024, and August 14th, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we're looking at a specific text amendment, this time around for one district. We're looking at a potential amendment to Article 6 dash 1C, as Neil read, which is your Commercial Services District. It's one of our three zoning districts for commercial uses today. It does enjoy today some residential allowances as well, and that's what is being specifically potentially amended with this article tonight. And as was posted on board docs, is the actual potential change to that district as far as the language? And, Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to, I'm just going to read that, and it would fall under six dash, or 6.1C dash 10 dash two, under residential district uses, which exist today, that section. But the new language that is potentially being introduced here is the total acreage dedicated to only residential uses shall be at most 25% of the total acreage of the entire development. Buildings that have both residential dwelling units and commercial uses will not have this land count towards this limit. Additionally, no residential uses shall be on the first floor of any mixed-use structure. This does not, this limit does not negate the lot area with setback and yard requirements and water and sewer requirements where applicable of the appropriate R district. So R1, R2, R3, or, not in this case, R4, but those first three R districts. And then there's a second section there that follows up, which is drafted as 6.1C dash 10 dash 3, which is residential uses shall only be built concurrently with or after the completion of all proposed commercial uses. So there's two different sections there. Planning commission looked at a variety of different options over the past several months. The board has as well referred back to the planning commission to find a way to potentially look at basically limiting the residential uses in the commercial districts to try and encourage or preserve the use for, the commercial districts for commercial purposes or, and/or uses. The commission looked at several different things and came up last month with this potential draft, Mr. Chairman, and I'm happy to go into details. I just think reading it, you know, it was the primary detail that needed to cover about what's being proposed tonight. But just as a reminder, in the current code and, and some of the things that are under consideration when you do this, or propose this code amendment, you know, the CS district, the Commercial Services District, allows residential uses today, all the way up to R3 uses and densities. R3 density is when it comes to residential, is eight units to an acre, if you do apartment style buildings or some type of multifamily. The way we interpret the code, you know, that as drafted, it doesn't necessarily nullify the density allowance, but would change how or where you could do it. So whereas today, you couldn't, you could use potentially 100% of the entire track for that residential purpose. As drafted, if approved, 25% of that track could be used. Doesn't necessarily negate the density, but you would have to reserve 75% of that tracked acreage for some type of commercial purpose. At least that's the intent, the way it's currently drafted, as far as staff is concerned. Again, it's a limit to the acreage dedicated only to residential uses to 25% of the development. It does not include, that 25% does not include if you have both the uses in the same structure, a mixed-use type structure. The only difference there is that you couldn't have residential uses on the first floor. Mr. Chairman, that's, that's what we have prepared, and what we worked on through some work sessions with the planning commission. Appreciate your time on this issue. It is advertised for a public hearing. We did notify all those record for commercial services, commercial services-owned properties, according to the tax assessor. So those notices have gone out, the neighbors have been notified, and it's been properly advertised for a public hearing tonight.
Go ahead, yes.
Sam, I'm a little confused by that 6.1C dash 10 dash 3.
Yes.
Okay, residential use shall only be built concurrently with or after the completion of all proposed commercial uses. So does that mean that we have to have 75% of this built up commercially before we allow any residential?
That's not the way I read it or understand it, Mr. Zegley. We can work on clarifying language for that, but there is that front section, dash two, now there is a portion that you can still use, the way I read this, the way it's being drafted, you know, to residential uses, but it can only be 25% of the total acreage. If you do choose that path, those uses can only be built concurrently, or, and they concede 25% if it's mixed use, or after the completion of proposed commercial uses. So there is a qualifier, and that's what that dash three does. It is a qualifier, when that can start.
I'm still confused when you say at the completion of proposed commercial uses.
Yeah, so residential uses should only be built concurrently with, so at the same time with commercial uses, or after the completion of commercial uses that are on the property.
But it's just proposed.
So I'm curious about, what's the threshold for completion? Or if you have a plan for that residential, how, how long are you hanging around, waiting for the ability to proceed with your residential?
The Clevinger's Corner.
Yeah, so that's, that's a little bit, it is similar. You're right, Commissioner Thornhill, but that, it's a little bit different because there's proffers that regulate that, so we are going to have to rely solely on the written code in this case. So residential uses should only be built concurrently at the same time, or after completion of a proposed, you know, a commercial use, so.
So could you propose a small portion, complete it, and then are you good to, have the flexibility to proceed with the residential?
I would say that interpretation of completion would mean that you have to have something built there. Doesn't say how much, though.
So you could come back, you could build?
Says all proposed.
Right, but you could propose to build on 25%.
Well, all proposed, but if you don't propose a lot, then you build, you build what you propose. We see that through commercial development. A lot of times it is phased, especially depending on the size of the parcel. Some of it's only developed, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Reams to jump in there, but there, there, some of the times with commercial development, you only see a little bit developed, you know, over time. And sometimes it's on the same parcel, and sometimes you divide it out along the way as well. So there are different ways to do it. I'm sorry, Commissioner Reams, I didn't mean to cut you off there.
Go ahead, Kate.
That's all I was getting at, is in theory, you could put a Commercial Services on 25% of it, build the 25% of houses, and come back five years later and build on the other 50, or another 10, or whatever. I mean, you could chunk it out different ways, but if you only come forward with the very first thing, as soon as that proposed is done, you can start with the houses.
Right.
Now, my question is, though, so if you can have residential in a multi-use building, but not on the first floor, does that density still apply? So like, am I still limited to eight units if I'm going to have apartments above my multi-use building and then freestanding?
No. So if you, you can exceed that threshold, in other words, if you have a mixed-use structure.
So in worst case?
Up to that R3 density, not the R3 density that's currently allowed. We're not looking to change that at all, which is that eight units to eight.
So the most, even with the multi-use, in R3, would be eight, period? Including the multi-use?
Yes, in theory, it could be, yes, the way it's written. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it wouldn't be eight in the multi-use, and then eight on the?
Yes. It just, it would force you at that point to have a mixed-use structure, though, if you choose that path. The other thing, too, is, you know, and keep in mind, this, this is the way it's drafted today, is the total acreage dedicated to only residential uses shall be used 25%. If you have 100 acres, 25, I'm going to use an easy number for me to work with. If you have 100 acres, 25 acres of that could be used for residential purposes. That doesn't mean that you still don't get your original density. It just means now you have to put it on a small chunk, a smaller chunk, in theory. Now, can you in reality do that? I don't know, because you're still going to have your setbacks that you're going to have to meet, you have your building height requirements that you're going to have to meet, you have to have your other standards that you're going to have to meet. But in theory, you could still acquire your same amount of density that you can today, you just have to do it on a smaller area.
All right, so go on with your 100 acres. Let's say I do whatever, build my houses on the 25.
Right.
Plus I have a multi-use.
You still can't exceed that R3 density over that entire acreage. So in a 100-acre example, that's 800 units if you choose the multifamily path.
Okay.
I think, I think the intent there is to encourage commercial use.
Yes.
And to basically get that development and have that built, so you don't have situations where you have all the residential built and no commercial growth.
I think that was the original intent, yes, sir, behind looking into this, yes.
So basically, it's not affecting the overall density of that parcel. The parcel density would still be the same as it is today. You could still get eight dwellings across the whole thing, you just have to do a different type of use. You have to have, like, maybe a below-grade retail strip center with a above-grade condos, and then the other 25% could still be residential, just straight-up residential and no mixed use, but the intent is to get commercial growth in the county.
That is the intent, and as coming forward from the Board of Supervisors, the planning commission.
Sam, correct me if I'm wrong. Are we, the density is the same, but now it's technically more dense?
I'm sorry.
Is it technically more dense? The acreage is the same, but we're, we're jamming it into a smaller par, uh?
You could, yeah, in theory, Commissioner Kinsley, you're spot on. I mean, it, it, basically what it does is it forces you for that residential use, if you're going to do it solely, you know, or standalone in that commercial area with other commercial stuff, it's got to be on a smaller footprint. It doesn't mean that your density, but you're right, by doing that, you could force an overall more dense development of that track, depending on what else comes later.
Would, do you think that would encourage landowners to split their tracks up and try to get more?
It, it could. I mean, there's varying ways people can tackle this, you know, I see it, you know, and whether it will have a real impact, I don't know. You know, we, we don't have, you know, as the commission pointed out to the Board of Supervisors, we don't have a lot of residential uses in the commercial today already. There are some. We haven't had, we haven't seen a lot of proposals over the years, you know, and you all pointed that out, you know, and shared that. So I don't know if there's going to be a real impact or not. In theory, it's trying to protect and preserve land area for commercial purposes, so, yeah.
So that said, Sam, can you speak at all to, say, the last two to five years and the buy right activity for CS and tell, say, how many site plans have gone residential and how many have gone commercial?
I can't think of one site plan that we've processed in CS for residential use. We haven't processed a lot of site plans in commercial use areas much at all, altogether, but there hasn't been one for residential, so.
Over a five-year period, for instance?
Even over a five-year period.
Okay. Ms. Thornhill?
So I just have a comment, then. This came back to us with this 25%. Is that true?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
You did not draw, we did not, so this came back to us, and this is the request?
Yes.
Okay, so now the request, have they completely analyzed? Because as Nate said, this is going to increase density if you do it the way, you know, the planners can do it, I mean, these engineer guys.
It won't increase density, it could increase the overall development of a track, but it won't increase the residential diversity, because that's capped currently in the code already. We're just not changing that through this proposal. I don't know that an entire, to answer your question directly, I'm not sure if it achieves everything that the supervisors as a whole are looking for, but this is a model that you all have drafted, and I think it's an appropriate one, based on the, you know, the request to look at it again as a potential option. You know, your original, I think, recommendation was, don't change anything.
Right.
Right? So, you know, it's been re-refered back to the planning commission, and I think in light of the 25% consideration, this is a fair recommendation moving forward to the board in that referral back to you all for consideration. It still preserves, it doesn't decrease the density. Some Board of Supervisors may want to decrease the residential capacity or density in the commercial districts. This won't, in theory, do that. It will, it will impact it, you know, don't get me wrong, it will impact it. To what level, we don't know, because it's not a direct density correlation here with this draft. It does, however, I think, enhance one of the main goals, and that's to preserve some area for actual commercial development in the commercial zoning districts, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Just had one more question. Of the parcels that are zoned CS, I don't know how to put this, those parcels, from a comp plan standpoint, could have the potential to potentially be rezoned again back to residential?
Yeah, I think that, you know, any parcel can apply for rezoning, you know, whether it's in compliance with the, or in conformance with the comp plan or not, and that, you'll spell that out through the process, right, through the rezoning process, but I don't know, most of our commercial tracks that are zoned CS today fall in areas that also we designate as future land use for commercial as well, most of them.
So if a landowner essentially found a situation where they couldn't develop or find leases for properties and things like that, when they started talking about it, they have the potential to rezone it to something else?
Yes, yes, they do. And there's one isolated anomaly, if you will, and that's Three Flags. Three Flags subdivision, we do show that as future land use residential, because guess what, there's 227 single-family homes there. You know, and a portion of that Three Flags development is zoned CS where we have single-family homes, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, Ray.
I apologize, I'm a little denser than most, but going back to that 6.1C 10 3, did I understand, Katie, when she said that what that means is that I can develop, if I develop 10% of the land commercially, then I can develop 10% of the land residentially? Or if I did 25%, up to 20? No?
Yeah, yes, in theory.
If your proposal is only to develop commercial 10%, that's your original proposed, because that's the word, the word "proposed." And then you can, you can do 25% residential. You can, you can propose 1% and that's your proposal, and somebody can do 25%.
You can propose 1% but still do 25, is that what I heard you say?
On the microphone.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a equal trade, and that's, the code doesn't state that either. So there is flexibility there.
So you just have to start the commercial development before you can start residential?
That's the intent, yes, correct.
Thank you.
And then the whole purpose is to make sure that we just don't go in and build a residential in a commercial?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think that's the, that's the intent of that, yes.
And I kind of like that. Okay. Anyone else? All right. Okay. So, Sam, at this time, we've already had the public hearing, right?
Not on this specific text amendment, no.
Okay, I know we've done, been back and forth with them, but, okay. So we'll open the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone who would like to speak, other than Larry who's standing up, um, we would...
Sam, hey, back, you know, you know the word.
Go ahead, and I'll give you a full name for the record, please, sir.
Larry Green, Salem District. Mr. Chairman, distinguished members, my name is Larry Green. I'm the chairman of the Culpeper Republican Committee. I represent myself tonight and the committee. I want to address the direction the Culpeper Board of Supervisors has taken since the Board of Supervisors election in 2021. Since the 2021 Board of Supervisors election, we have seen an attempt by the board to transform Culpeper County. Fundamentally, these board members are creating an imbalance in the Culpeper County when the Board of Supervisors removes the property rights from owners and tries to influence the decision, and I emphasize this to y'all, of the planning commission. Giving themselves all the power, making the planning commission irrelevant. These members govern with a self-proclaimed mandate proclaiming in the name of preserving agriculture. This is more propaganda than we're hearing on you today. Let me be clear, there is no citizen mandate to fundamentally transform Culpeper. And that is what the peop-, if that is what the people desire, then they should wait for the 2025 election, just 14 months from now. A lot can change after that. We need to allow the democratic process to be exercised and allow Culpeper's war on property rights to be front and center. Tonight, the Board of Supervisors asked the planning commission to remove rights away from landowners. Do you want this to be your legacy, my question? I'm calling on the Culpeper's most trusted leaders, and I'm looking at them to step up, answer the call. We, we need trustworthy leaders who will still believe in our constitutional liberties. Our elected and appointed leaders should be taken, should not be taken away longstanding property rights or thumbing their nose at the U.S. Constitution. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name's Tom Ireland. Um, I have property to own in Three Flags, as a bunch of other people do. This is the first we've heard of this. Um, I tried to call in and find out a little bit about it, and if you're confused, I'm confused also. I've, I've spent 40 years working on electronic warfare systems, and I can't figure this out. I called in, and one of the people there said that the homes are, of course, grandfathered in. They're residential, they're gonna be there.
Just directed to the commission.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, so, so the homes are grandfathered in there, and the problem is, natural disaster comes by, wipes out the house, there's a two-year restriction bef-, you have to rebuild within two years, is that correct? That, that's what I was told over the phone. Um, people from Hurricane Katrina are still fighting their cases in court.
Yes.
So how's it...
That is correct.
So it has to be rebuilt within two years?
Correct, yes.
So...
That's what the, that's what Sam just said.
Yeah, that's why I was looking over that way, so that's, that's certainly not helping the homeowners in the county at all. Why would they do this, then?
No, you, we, we actually don't answer, uh, the, the questions, but we'd like to hear what you have to say in your input.
Well, you've got 220-some homeowners over in Three Flags that would probably wanna have an answer to that, whether y'all want to answer it or not. It's a, it's a big concern. You're taking, again, like the man said, you're taking away property rights. We can't guarantee how fast an insurance company's gonna wanna replace our home. If you want people to move into the county, you don't want them to be aware that if a natural disaster comes by, you're gonna lose your property.
And you have, um, I want you to understand, wasn't making anything short here, but you do have the opportunity to speak with staff and, you know, um, get more detail on that, on that question here.
Well, I tried to get details, and it took, took a while to get through on two phone calls, and one time the woman wasn't real sure, so.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay. Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Andy Davenport. I am the vice president of Real Estate Development for Community Housing Partners. Community Housing Partners is based in Christiansburg, Virginia. We're the, uh, state's largest private owner of income-restricted housing. Uh, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and have been doing business in the Commonwealth since 1975, so we're coming up on our 50th year. Our sole mission is to serve, um, uh, families and seniors whose incomes force them to pursue income-restricted homes. And I say that this way because I build affordable housing, and a lot of people have a lot of connotations with that. But I serve working families. And, um, typically, I don't come out to individual counties to opine on changes in, in zoning code. I do have a specific interest in one of the parcels here. I'm discussing, uh, the opportunity to create an affordable housing community on this site, um, which would allow us to introduce a concept of mixed-income, mixed-tenure housing, where we would build affordable rental housing as well as affordable low-income housing, uh, with a mix of townhomes, garden-style apartments. Um, all of this would become impossible with the, with the current proposed tax change. I also would like to put this out to you as a concept, as a policy to consider for economic development purposes. We understand the need to preserve commercial space and commercial opportunities for development. However, we don't build housing for people who work in commercial establishments. When the average home prices exceed half a million dollars, people who work in retail, light industry, teach, fire, public service, can't afford the homes. I would love, love, uh, Culpeper to be a leader by creating a affordable or income-restricted overlay with this, an idea where the, uh, in addition to, say, the mixed-use component, that the restrictions of 25% exclusively for residential could also be applied, you know, that exception could be applied to income-restricted housing. You know, I serve people who, you know, typically, most of our multifamily development is for people who earn between 0 and 80% of the area median income. For a family of four, that can be up to $120,000. I'm allowed to go up to 120% of area median income for our homeownership products. We do homeownership and rental development. And I would ask that you consider the economic development impacts of this kind of change. When we say we want mixed-use development, which is a very lofty goal, we want commercial development, do we also have the housing for the people who will actually do that? As the staff said, they've seen very limited applications for both residential and commercial development. This is not a good time to be building in this country. Still, interest rates are high, still co-, you know, inflation may be slowing, but that doesn't mean it's went down. Construction costs are still at all-time highs. So if you want commercial development, help us build places for people who work in commercial and, i- in, in commerce, retail, and light industry. Teachers, hospital workers, all those people, the people we serve every day. Um, so again, I think it's wonderful that you guys are willing to hear this thing. Uh, uh, my, my, my thoughts on this, I would love for you to consider the concept of an affordable housing overlay prior to, before instituting this kind of restriction, but again, my interest is specifically in the opportunity to build affordable housing in Culpeper on a specific site that's affected by this. Um, with that, I'll thank you all, and if you ever have any questions for me, um, please come talk to me. Thank you.
One question, before you, um, take your seat, um, a lot of the, um, larger subdivisions and all, and projects that come through, I ask, I always ask them, um, because they all include affordable housing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, they all include, you know, some affordable housing. What's the difference in their affordable housing and your affordable housing definition?
So, when they come through and say, we, we, we're doing affordable housing, well, I don't know if you have a, an inclusionary restriction or, or provision that says, oh, well, then they just say, hey, look, someone lives there, it's affordable to them. They don't really, they're not required to set their rents at a level that says, no, someone who earns 30, 40, $50,000 a year is paying 30% of their income towards housing expenses, rent and utilities. That's what I do. And I have to do it for 40 years. I'm a nonprofit, I like to do it forever. You know, I've got, we have stuff from the 70s and early 80s, we still recapitalize, um, we, we manage, we own and manage our own, own developments. So that, that is the, the difference. So that's, again, why I don't always say affordable or attainable, 'cause for so many people, it doesn't mean anything. Income-restricted, I have a legal obligation to provide housing for these folks. And when I do it, and if you put in, and if, you know, a overlay that said, hey, if you agree to restrict the renters by this amount with a deed restriction, I put a deed restriction on it. It says for this period, uh, you may only lease or sell to people who earn up to 80, 100, 120% of the area median income. I'd be happy to work with staff to craft language around that. Uh, I've done it in other jurisdictions, I've been doing this, um, I know I look like I'm 12, but I'm actually getting very old, and the reason is 'cause I work in affordable housing. Uh, so, I've worked with staff in other places to, to craft that kind of, uh, language. I will also say, if this restricts, if this change was removed, the 25% restriction on residential, by right, I can go into the, I can go into Virginia housing in the spring and request the financing to do an affordable development on, on the site in question. So, um, you know, I'd love the overlay, but if the, if the overlay never happens, then the buy-right option for me on, on the parcel I'm in negotiations with would work as well.
Two questions, where, what is the minimum lot size that you typically build? Uh, and then what is the largest amount of units you've done on one parcel?
Oh, so, I work in lots of different jurisdictions, so what I'm doing in Fairfax County and Alexandria is very different from what I'm doing in Portsmouth, which is very different from the stuff we do in, in Christiansburg and, uh, um, in this part of the world. Around, around, with, with this, the eight units an acre, I think it's light, personally, from a, from what I like to do, but I can work very well with that kind of, um, uh, mix. I mean, typically, you know, you know, I always, I'm always contemplating parking, it's a big issue. So around here, my residents would probably park at a 1.75 to 2 ratio. In a more urban area, if I was doing, uh, an age-restricted, we're looking at 1 to 1.5 typically. So, I mean, that affects how much land I'm doing per acre, 'cause I, I surface park a lot, unless I'm, unless government's giving me a lot of money.
You're the first that I've, um, seen in years that I've been here that, um, is the definition of affordable housing, the way I think it, is, um, is what you're doing. And, um, and, um, we do need more, more of that, but, um, but okay. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Does the staff have, do we have his address or, uh, contact information? Do you have a business card or something if you would leave?
Oh, we can come.
Okay, thanks. Oh, yes. Still have to give your name, and still have to give your name, and, uh, for the record.
David Martin, Stevensburg District. Before you start the timer, I want to make one clarification. I think the question you were asking is what makes, um, Andy's program different, community housings and its partner habitat for humanity. Um, at least from my perspective, when I started this project, I was looking for a 100% not-for-profit team members. And as close to 100% affordable, um, not a market or egg development that meets some minimum, so I don't know if they're gonna be able to meet my 100% goal, but that's their bailiwick is affordable housing, based on a federal definition of it. So that's, that's the sweet spot for them, and that would, is what I would say would be the difference.
Um, hold on a sec. John, can you hear? Is the microphone okay? With, okay, good, okay. The shorter people can, you know, we can, we can get through to that, but you're just a little bit tall. Okay, no, go ahead.
First, I'd like to thank the planning commission for your work on two challenging tasks the board has given you, the density reductions in A1RA, and tonight's topic, the restrictions on residential in the CS district. Tonight's proposed ordinance changes affect one zoning district. I am the largest landowner, I believe the only affected landowner that has spoken out against the changes, and to the best of my knowledge, have the only active project that will be affected by these proposes, proposed changes. A project that has been in the works for almost 18 months, having notified the county last December of our intentions as required by Virginia Housing. The reason I mention these items is that if I can support your changes tonight, and no other landowners speak out against them, then you've done your job and done it, done it well, far better than anyone imagined when the Rules Committee fired its first salvo in Culpeper's war on property rights earlier this year. However, what is proposed in its current form, whether intentionally or not, will have significant disparate impact on half of the county that do not own farms. Over the past 18 months, I've had the opportunity to work closely with people from different backgrounds, moderate liberal and, liberal and even progressive advocates for people across the socioeconomic spectrum with vastly different needs, opportunities, and challenges. Without a doubt, one of, if not the greatest challenge facing these groups, is affordable housing. And let me stress that affordable housing is not single-family detached, detached on 20-acre lots as supervisors Gugino and Rosenberg, Berger propose, nor is it achieved by drastically decreased housing density and availability. It is not a catalyst for higher crime, as several of my neighbors have expressed, or a magnet to attracting more people to move to Culpeper, quite the opposite. Affordable housing is needed for Culpeper's current citizen base, just ask your governmental support organizations and agencies, as I have. Consider that, consider that the comp plan goals being used to justify these actions tonight speak to managing growth, people moving into Culpeper County. This project addresses the needs of existing Culpeper residents, and yes, renters rarely own cows, but they do work on farms and related agricultural jobs, but most importantly, they are our first responders, teachers, waiters, waitresses, many are civil servants, and the list goes on. And you can't have an agrarian community without somewhere for people to live. I sincerely hope that this team, of which two of the members are here, this project can be part of the solution and not part of the problem. Multifamily and affordable are unquestionably compliant with the comp plan, and frankly, the CS zoning district is the only one that can meet Culpeper's affordable housing needs. In summary, my request tonight is, first, and I wrote this before the whole item discussion on the hidden concurrency clause that we were discussing about item number three, the concurrency clause, it has not shown up in any of the PowerPoint, it did not show up in the letters that were sent to landowners. Up until a few minutes ago, I had not heard it and could not figure out what it meant, and I'm not sure anybody else is any clearer on it now. What does that concurrency clause mean and why is it relevant? Second, and most importantly, I have no objection to limiting single-family detached and townhomes mark, market rate from the CS district. And, uh, I have no objection to limiting, um, uh, single-family or townhomes, to some extent, and the reason I put to some extent is that they're, they need flexibility on some of this, but I'm not completely understanding. What I do want, very, very quickly, thank you, is that you need to accept affordable housing on that. Add, and here's the key, add multifamily and affordable, and you can use the definition on the comp plan 216 or the references of, of, of affordable housing or the federal legal definitions, as an exemption along with mi- mixed use, as staff has pointed out. If anyone here can explain why three floors of housing on one floor for commercial is okay, but three floors of housing with the bottom floor, with no bottom floor is not, I'd love to hear the logic. but three floors of housing with the bottom floor, with no bottom floor is not, I'd love to hear the logic. And if your response is, "We want commercial," then please tell me why you took away the commercial incentives just a year ago. It doesn't make sense. Follow the Comp Plan, adhere to your oaths to the Commonwealth and U.S. constitutions, do not make any changes that disparately impact these citizens and future renters. If the Board wants to do that, let them own it. Culpeper has twenty-one thousand acres in permanent conservation easements. The process is working, landowners voluntarily committing their properties to permanent conservation is working. There is no need to take people's land to preserve ag. In front of you of two of Virginia's-
Let's get to a close.
Okay, last paragraph. In front of you of two of Virginia's premier housing groups telling you that they're able and willing to work with Culpeper to make housing needs, let these people do their jobs and give them the flexibility they need. Thank you.
Good, you were close. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, good evening, I'm Melanie Birch with Habitat for Humanity, and I just wanted to give you a couple of little stats here. It won't be long, but I thought it would be helpful based on some of the comments you made. I want to extend to also say that we follow federal guidelines for affordability in income-restricted homes as well. As Habitat, we aspire to make sure that people that fall within thirty and eighty percent of your area median income qualify for our homes. Moreover, we put our homes into the Virginia Statewide Community Land Trust, which creates permanent affordability in perpetuity for those homes. In other words, if we build a home, it's not going to be a one-and-done where someone then sells it, and then it can become a market-rate home. Specifically, we also have a very standard requirement, and that is, you either live or work in that community or that county for at least one year. Our goal is to ensure that your local residents have safe, affordable, decent homes to live in. Moreover, we build our homes to Energy Star and Net Zero standards. So, we're building an excellent product that stands up with other home builders. Additionally, I actually challenge a lot of home builders to look at our product and figure out which one is theirs and which one is ours as we move through the counties. We're very specific and thoughtful in incorporating historic pieces and components to what we build, so people don't stand out. And then, lastly, I would say, you know, in the state of Virginia, Habitat for Humanities across the state have had an economic impact of seventy-eight million dollars to our economy. We ensure that when we're building, we're using local supplies, local builders, local volunteers, and putting our local folks into those homes. It's exceedingly important to us, and we really want to invigorate the process here in the county and really make sure that the workforce has those homes. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for the clarification there. Anyone else? The gentleman way in the back? With the cap on? How you doing, sir?
Good evening, good evening, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight, as always. And just like Larry said, you guys are actually the gatekeepers to Culpeper County, and we hope and wish that you would continue to be the gatekeepers to Culpeper County. I concur with everything that Larry said earlier. I really wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but I really think it's important that everybody's opinion is heard. More people here are purchasing property based on the Comp Plan. You simply can't change the rules in the middle of the game. Changing the zoning code affects all the Culpeper residents, not just a few. When zoning code is changed, and when it is used, when it is outreachin', you need to get more input from individuals. In the upcoming case, A1 RA, the rezoning actually should be tabled until the lawsuit has been resolved. Based on what Katie had explained today, there's a massive off-ramp in this suggestion. This tells me that more time needs to be put into this and more thinking, and not be rushed. Is this suggested actually going to make a change? Is it actually the proper solution? In the case of A1 RA, suggested changes will not make any difference whatsoever, and the problem will still exist. Actually, it would allow for more building to be done and also built quicker. More time is needed, and a third party should be hired to evaluate this situation. Thank you very much, as always, and have a safe trip home.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
I have a comment I want to ask staff. So, the red lines that we have in this proposal, did we add residence uses, residential uses shall only be built concurrently with or after completion of all proposed commercial uses, is that added?
Both of those sections are new sections, dash ten dash two and dash ten dash three.
All right, so, out at Clevenger's, the commercial development has stalled until the residential component is there to support it. And now, you've reversed the cart and the horse by asking that the commercial use has got to be completed and before residential can happen. I think that should be struck from this request, because it doesn't make any sense economically. The reality, they, people don't come in and do leases for whatever little restaurant, dry cleaners, boutiques, they don't do it first. They don't come in and put their lease on the, and their money on the line, because they're usually a smaller business. So, I don't think it's realistic to expect that the commercial component be done before a house can be built.
It says concurrent.
Well, it's at the same time, it's not going to be, it'd be very difficult to see the commercial component come to reality without the houses. And that's just about one of the proffers out there at Clevenger's. The how, the commercial could not happen until the houses were done.
Sam, could we interpret that to be-
Let us, let us be acknowledged before we say anything, so that we can kind of keep these conversations from doubling up.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes, are you finished?
I'm finished, I'm waiting for a response. Do I need a response?
I didn't, I didn't know if I heard a question or not.
Well, the question is, it was just added, and you said, "Yes, this is just new." All right, and then, I guess I'm asking, is that a realistic expectation? It doesn't seem like it is in the real world where we live.
I guess Clevenger's is a one example, but Clevenger's, just keep in mind, is a total different purpose, and you need-
It is, I, I agree.
It's a PUD, it's a plan unit development.
I agree, but I'm just telling you that the reality is, I don't see commercial vendors coming in and putting their money on the line, their lease on the line, and their responsibility on the line without the housing component being started, done, something. So, I don't see how that's even a realistic addition. So, I'm saying I would like to strike it. That's it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes.
Sam, if I can ask a question, I have lived in a neighborhood of that kind. Does it mean that the, and we had empty units for the early years. Does it mean that the construction needs to be complete but not filled with a commercial client? Could that be, does it have to be rented out, does it have to be in use? Or is it just, hey, it's built, it's an empty office underneath, you know, a set of apartments, or whatever the case is?
It potentially could fall in that category into the concurrently category, because you got an or there with the completion. So, the or is not an and or, so there's an or completion. But if you fall into the camp where you're building it concurrently and you don't ever finish it, and then there could be some, you know, gray area there for sure.
I guess my question is, I built a commercial space, it sits unused. It's still a commercial space, it's just not rented out.
That's right.
And I'm still paying the note, but I've also got the apartments rented out above it, whatever, townhouse. And that was, I lived in a neighborhood in Woodbridge that was, years ago, that was exactly that way, and we had literally empty spots for years. I just want to make sure that we're not putting in language that restricts people, what happens if it never gets filled? And I don't think that's fair.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that, and that's why we constantly evolve with codes. You know, as you know, we've looked at several code amendments, and you never necessarily get it right the first time, so. I appreciate that comment.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Price?
Mr. Chairman, to go back on our discussion of a few minutes ago, so, I thought what that meant, and maybe we do need to clarify this a bit, was that the seventy-five percent of commercial didn't have to be finished before the twenty-five percent of residential could be built. That is, if you had some commercial started, then you could start some residential. I mean, that was my understanding from a while ago, as long as they were sort of moving together, at least, at least along the same path. I mean, was that, was that the intent of the wording?
Commissioner Price, I believe that's the intent of what was drafted. You know, they're either, they're going along at the same time, or something's been completed, and now you can go to the residential portion of it, so.
Okay, I don't know if there's a better way to word that, maybe, if some more thought is given to that, maybe it could be clearer, because if we're having questions about it, then somebody who comes in to see staff about a project who have questions about it. If I could ask one more question, though. So, if the, if CS has R3 zoning density, and that's eight units an acre, so, and we've got a little over four hundred acres of CS in the county, so if a hundred acres of that is developed, I mean, that's eight hundred housing units, which seems to be a lot of housing available there potentially. I would guess maybe affordability maybe would be, depending on how the builder built them, or, you know, I mean, they could be maybe scaled so they'd be more affordable, but that still seems like it makes a lot of housing available.
Yeah, overall, the density is not changing with this proposal, it does change how it can look on the property, though.
Yes. Okay, Mr. O'Amber?
To go back to that same six-point-one C dash ten dash three, I feel like we either need it to be expanded, because staff comes and goes, as we know, and that means today, what you say is an interpretation, or it could be, it's very vague, and to the people in the audience that have to use whatever we come up with, I think it needs further clarification. I don't know the exact language, but I think it needs something else. I don't like it just either-or, and it wants all, I think it shall be only. I think you need to clarify that. I can't vote for it like that.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes.
I'll just say, based on your comments about the lack of activity for by right use in either direction, residential or a commercial use, I just feel like this language is taking an opportunity for these landowners that just hasn't happened yet and making it even harder for the parts to fit together. And I agree with the other commissioners that the concurrent clause is vague. And I think it's going to create difficulty and make people avoid trying to even enter into this. That's all for now.
Yes, great.
Yeah, I'd like to pick up on what Ms. Burton said here about the fact that, you know, we didn't have, it's not been, not been an issue for the past five years, and I'm reading here what you asked us to do. It says, "The Planning Commission will determine whether the proposed ordinance amendment is necessary to further the general purpose of promoting the health, safety, or general welfare of the public as proposed in the Code of Virginia." I didn't hear anything here that tells me that this is necessary to do that. My opinion.
Okay. Do you need to say anything else, Mike?
All right, raise, no, I guess, I guess a couple things. One is the, in terms of six-point-one C ten dash three, you could do it similar to how you, if you were going to do it, similar to how you would do applications and tie it to a building permit, or a percentage of building permits requires, at that time, you have to have commercial use completed, if you were going to do something like that. I do agree in the fact that, in a lot of the projects I've been involved in, you're going to do, you would do low-grade retail of some sort, a lot of it's tied with a, a, you know, grocery anchor chain or something like that, and then you would build that. But you have to have, to Ms. Thornhill's point, you do have to have a certain amount of units to drive that use. And if you're building it out away from the town, it's going to make it more difficult to actually create that environment, you know? So, you would have to have some sort of residential use ahead of the commercial, if it's out in a rural area, we're going to say. I think that, you know, I understand the intent of the ordinance, that's why I was saying, what I was saying before, is that I think the intent is that it's, it's trying to encourage more commercial use. The problem is, is that, as we know, in Culpeper and even in Tyson's Corner and other jurisdictions, finding lease, office lease space and things like that is already null. You know, it's fifty percent, sixty percent available leases in Northern Virginia. So, getting it here is going to be a challenge. I think that, you know, you know, my overall personal opinion is, I would probably just leave it the way it is. That's my personal opinion, so. Thank you.
Anyone else? Doug?
I'll make it brief, I agree with my fellow commissioners, I just do not think this is necessary whatsoever. There's not a problem, there's not an issue. I do not see what it's trying to solve by making any changes.
Okay. All right. Keith?
Chairman, well, I thought the intent, as we got into this whole exercise, was to ensure that one of the, that the commercial districts couldn't just be all residential without any commercial component at all. And I think the ordinance as it exists now leaves the door open to that. And I thought that the solution that we've sort of got close to here, where twenty-five percent purely residential and the seventy-five percent commercial with a residential come on, I thought that was a good sort of balance to keep, to make sure that the original intent of the commercial districts isn't lost, and it doesn't become just another housing development.
Okay. Yes, Katie?
So, this is probably going to shock everybody, but for once, I actually agree with Mr. Price. No, I mean, to me, that's, that's the important piece of this whole thing, is to make sure that we are preserving the commercial piece to it and not building it all up in houses, and then going and finding other land that now we're going to rezone to commercial because we built houses on all the commercial. So, I think some of the language might need work. I do agree that I think that the twenty-five percent is a good solution to prevent, you know, nobody has a crystal ball, like, we're all trying to do the best we can for our county and our residents. But, you know, if we were to leave things the way they are, you know, yes, it could be built up in houses, and now we're rezoning other parcels to go find commercial uses for.
Okay.
I have one last comment.
Yes.
If you're a hundred acres of commercial, you could always downzone it to a housing component and leave a small portion. Right? So, what's the exercise for? You know, it seems a little redundant, because there is a way around it to start with. So, we are going to make all this change in language that's a little bit confusing. So, I really am not in favor of mixing up the message, and that's kind of what we're doing.
Okay. Anyone else? Nate?
Mr. Chairman, one final comment from me, and Cindy could probably test this more than anybody here on the board, is that market drives the demand. And if the demand isn't for commercial, and I can build residential to afford to eventually do commercial, or vice versa. I think that's one thing, we're stripping the natural progress of how people manage their money, and we're forcing them to build commercial in order to build residential. And I don't, I don't think that's a good way forward.
Okay. Anyone else? I think we got everybody covered, except me. Okay, I've, you know, heard all the comments and all that's been made also, and I can see, you know, both sides of it. And I've been here when it's been times that we've had the large subdivisions come in, and they explain why the commercial is, is important to have commercial when it comes to the number of trips and all that's going to be made out, and somebody has to go get, instead of having to go, you know, like from Clevenger's, going to Warrenton to the grocery store to get a loaf of bread or some milk or something, you know, you, you know, the intent was to make sure that we had not all houses, but a mixture of commercial. And I kind of see some of that, you know, with this too, and some very good points have been brought up from, you know, both sides. have been brought up from, you know, both sides. You know, when Ms. Thornhill says that, you know, we can, you know, downzoning that you can do, but I think, you know, just like we put these zones in place for, like the data centers and all now, you know, we put those there for a reason, so that, you know, when people come, instead of having it scattered, you know, all over the county, we put that there for a reason. And I think this, to me, it seemed like that's what we were trying to do, is to protect the commercial that we do have. And I've, the more I've heard, you know, the comments that have been made, I think there's really no wrong answer to it. You know, we could take this discussion on either side of the scale, but I think the, to have to make the change, I'm not sure either that that change, you know, at this particular point, needs to be made at this particular point. So, I like when Katie said that, for once, she agreed with Mr. Price, okay? And I'm not in disagreement with him, but for, I don't think we, it's that much of an impact on us right now that we have to make a change, you know, that we really have to make a change. And so, so at this particular point, if there's no other discussion? Wait.
Well, Mr. Chairman, do you have a...
Mr. Price, and then Lance.
Well, just a question, could we refer it back to staff to continue to refine the language in that one sentence in 10-dash-3 to clarify that one point about how much commercial has to be there before how much residential can be there?
You know, I think, Mr. Price, when we really look at this, and, you know, we need to just, from the elephant in the room, we just need to approach it, you know, from the standpoint that, you know, as a commission, as a planning commission, we are required to look at the zoning and see if there are some issues, whether it's with the safety and all of, you know, the community. And that's what I just don't see myself at this particular point, is that what is the, you know, what is the issue that, how are we going to be impacted, you know, so much by what we already have? And, you know, maybe over a period of time, we might understand that, and the supervisors have more understanding of some of the things and the reasons, you know, also, but we are the planning commission, and when we look at this, we look at it from a reason of, does it need to be changed? Is, you know, is it impacting these areas here? And just don't see it. And so, I'd rather just stay with that same type of thinking that I've had over the 20 years that I've been here, is, you know, do the job that you called, that you asked to do, and that's to look at the zoning, see the impact, and if we see an impact that we agree on, then we, you know, send it forward that way. That's it.
Well, just, so just for clarity, so the commission's in agreement just to let it lay for now, except for maybe me and Katie? So, it would be like seven to two, if we were, okay?
Well, we haven't voted yet, so we're not saying you and Katie won't.
Oh, no, I'm just trying to get a feel for what the seven is.
You know, we're not saying you and Katie won't, we just, you know, we're just saying that after the discussion, we, it kind of seemed that way. Okay, all right. So, at this time, we, no other discussion, the chair entertain a motion. All done. No, I'm just kidding, go ahead. Go ahead, Lance.
The only other thing I want to say is that I still think, you know, I think Mr. Martin spoke a little bit earlier tonight about affordable housing, as did...
As did everyone else, or some other folks there. So, I think the county needs affordable housing. It's desperate. I mean, there's a lot of kids out there that have good jobs that, you know, are making higher dollar salaries that are still having difficulty finding, finding housing, and they can live in a, in a, in a property that could have commercial. So, it's not saying you can't have both and be limited to just one. So, I still would say the parcel still has the opportunity to do both as it, if it moves forward. And I think that one of the things I was mentioning early was you do have the ability to downzone if you did need to, so, but I think you have that right.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all right.
Hooray.
Okay. Okay. Chair entertain a motion at this time?
I'll make it.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that says that the planning commission recommends that the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, ZTA 1124-1, Article 61(c), Commercial Services, be rejected.
Second?
Rejected. Sam? Rejected. Is that...
Is that the right word?
That's the right word.
Not adopted, I mean, typically when you're looking at...
Not recommended?
Not, to not, for the board supervisors, to not recommend adoption or amendment to the ordinance.
Recommend not adopting the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Okay, all right. I second that amendment.
Any other discussion? All opposed? I mean, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed likewise. Okay. Got it recorded. All right. Sam? All right. That case is closed. Now, the chair entertain a motion to move into our work session.
Second.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Now, move into our work session.